And committee means to order. Enjoy, appreciate everybody being here tonight. We have a one change we're gonna make. We have some folks from out of town here for Public Works Committee and we're gonna move that up just as soon as we reconvene after our special council meeting. So we're gonna make that arrangement for, I guess, as who is it here? Is it them? Whoever it is, they're gonna let them get out here early. Waste connection. Yeah, we're gonna let you get out here early. Sorry. All right. It is 5:31. I'll turn this over to Brandon Huckabee.
All right. We will open up this Development Service Committee where we're gonna hear some presentations regarding subsidized housing in our community and I'm gonna let Mr. Barnes lead that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Huckabee. Mr. Chairman, tonight we have Wade Bienski and Daniel Saylor, who will make presentations to the, to the committee. We had two others who had expressed interest. However, they have decided not to make the presentation and to withdraw their, their projects. Mr. Chairman, both of these gentlemen were advised by email that they would have 10 minutes to make a presentation and then five minutes for questions after that. Of course, that's up to you, Mr. Chairman, but that's, that's the instructions. We were working under his staff. So the first one, Mr. Chairman, is Wade Bienski.
I better run, I'm peeing.
Run and talk fast.
I can do that. Yeah, we, Aggies, we know how to talk fast. Good afternoon, guys. I appreciate y'all. Maybe I shouldn't have said that. I don't know.
No, you did all right.
Thank y'all again for meeting with us at short notice. I do appreciate it. I'm with the retirement, living, the senior development that's gonna be out there behind the Laura Glenn Assistant Living off of FM8. Here's kind of a rendering that we mopped up so you have to kind of see. This is what we're looking at right here. Forty-eight units, half-one, half-two bedrooms. It's age restricted, only 55 and up. These are gonna be affordable rents. That's what we apply for these tax credits. It's perfect for a senior restricted development. It's perfect for seniors that are on fixed incomes. You're looking at rents from 370 to about 800, depending on their income. Income limits, though, they're still pretty high. Twenty, almost $28,000, which you look at the average social security check, I want to say it's about $18,500. So most seniors gonna qualify to live here, but it's just an affordable place to live. I, I reached out to a lot of different community members before today and they all expressed that there's a great need for senior housing in Stevensville because students, you know, they're, everybody's renting by the bedroom. The rents are real high. Medical, everything else is going high. The, you know, medical expenses are expen, you know, going up and up every year. You know, seniors need affordable places to live. There's a couple of these in town. They're both full. They got waiting list. There's definitely a need for this. These seniors, their incomes aren't going up. They're on fixed incomes. This is a perfect development. You don't see too many people coming in the town doing senior developments. They're a lot more expensive to do. Single-story, they require bigger footprint, you know, nine acres for 48 units. You know, you could do 200 units if you did multifamily on the same acre. So you don't see too many people doing senior deals. We think it's a great opportunity for the city to bring in something like this. It's not gonna happen very often. Most people that come in, I mean, you could see before on the application log, everybody else doing multifamily. Nobody wants to do seniors. There's not much money to be made, but, you know, we think there's an opportunity this year. The only way it's gonna work out is if the city, there's only enough funds for one development. So, you know, whoever y'all support, I would recommend, you know, supporting one because there's only enough funds for one. That way, not to fight against each other, you know, we could request for more funding. You don't have to worry about, you know, for us, we're gonna need an extra $3 million to do this type of deal because it's just a lot higher development cost to do this. So, you know, if there was support from the city, you know, we'd get this deal. We think it'd be a good development for the city. I even brought someone, we have some, you know, we're, we're from Bryan College Station. I even brought from one of our residents from one of our other tax credits, just as a reference. Nothing but good things to say. That's why I brought them. But I know only got 10 minutes, so I'll just, if y'all have any questions. But again, I reached out to many different community members in town. They're all supportive. They all said how we need this development, especially for the seniors who, you know, not working anymore. Income's not going up. Medical expenses are going up. You don't have too many developers wanting to do these, but we're here, you know, and we would appreciate y'all's support.
How many of these have y'all done in the past?
About 1,000 units, all in Texas. You know, closest from here, we've done a senior deal just south of Fort Worth. This is probably our most recent, a few years ago in Kennedale. We have one in Huntsville, Texas. And we do also, we have some multifamily as well, but the last few projects we've done focused on the senior housing.
So it must more like duplexes?
The townhomes. There's four in each. They're a single-story. They're not gonna look any different than a house. That's why we think it would work well where it's at. You know, it's kind of, kind of be off the road behind the assisted living facility there. I think it's Laura Glenn. I think they might have been renamed, but it's right behind there. But, you know, all single-story, all brick. There's a, a benefit we think of this is that we provide a large community room, which will basically act as a second senior center. We open it up to the community. It's, it's a large enough facility to where there's weekly events every week that we'll provide, but it'll be open up to all the seniors in the community. And there's also a fitness center that'll be right next to that community room that'll be available for the residents. But we feel like it would also be a service to the community as well by providing this meeting space that's kind of on the other side of town from the existing senior center. So we feel like it would be a good resource for the town as well or meeting location. Forty-eight units, so not a big development, but spread out, you know, this is nine-acre side. So, I mean, it, I would say there might be some people saying, oh, it's too dense, but you could probably put in a 48 homes on that nine-acre side. So, you know, there's, I know there's some, some concern about, you know, changing it from senior to multifamily, but we're restricted. Our funding is tied to it being age restricted. We can't change that. And in any ways, the, the units are designed for seniors. They're all handicap accessible, single-story, you know, large rooms. It's designed for seniors. But it's, it doesn't matter. Our funding is tied to it being age restricted, so we can't change that.
How, how long is that restriction?
Forty years, but even after that. I mean, I mean, the way it's designed, I mean. And then, like I said, we're, we kind of consider ourselves like a more of a local, small, family-run type of development company. All of our stuff's in Texas. We're not gonna go out in three years and sell out to someone else out of state or a big city somewhere else. That's not who we are. You know, developer and his wife and his daughters, that's, that's us. So we're not gonna jump ship. You know, what you see is what you get. We're more than happy, you know, we have a list. Every town that we've been in, most of everyone, we've had phase-two developments. That means the cities had to go and support us, give us a resolution of support for our second phase. So they were happy with what they had and supported us again.
Your, your development, I mean, the buildings and all, the picture really looks really nice. And I'm assuming that you've done one similar to this, like you said, in Kennedale, I believe, in South Fort Worth and whatnot. What kind of cost factor, or did I miss that? Kind of cost factor are we talking about for rentals on, on these units? And I assume these are mostly two-bedroom, one-
Yeah, they're all two that, the most that we could do. Can't do threes in these senior deals. They're all one and twos.
What are you projecting, that type of thing?
As far as like, we're, we're thinking this is gonna be about $10 million development cost. And then, you know, obviously, you know, with the cost of this development, all the way you're gonna get something like this to work is file requests and these tax credit funds. To help kind of supplement the, the rent, since the rents are gonna be really low.
That's what I'm getting at. What kind of rents are we talking?
Yeah, 370, I kept the exact number here, 373 for downs, you know, depending on the income, you got 373 to 747. So, and it's all, you know-
Income-based.
-based. But, you know, the income range, the, the max that we would allow is $27,900 and, and then lower than that. So, which shouldn't be an issue with most seniors should be under that. You know, there might be some that might have retirement accounts and stuff like that, but then what you do with that kind of situation, you count 6% of that. So you could basically be living on your social security and have over $150,000 in the 401K and still be eligible to live here. And even if you did go a little bit over that, we're gonna have a few market rate rents that are open to any of the income levels. I think there's, the last that we looked at, five. So there'll be five units available for, if there are seniors, that might be a little bit over that income range. And we also do, just like with all other developments, like everybody else, you know, we'll do criminal checks, credit checks. They gotta pass the basic checks like that to be able to, you know, live here, so.
What all will be included in that, in the rental?
The, the water and the sewer, they'll just pay their bill, but electric bill, which would be, you know, these are, you know, these tax credit, there's all these restrictions now. Everything's energy, energy star rated. So the, the bills will be really low. Then there'll be onsite manager there, basically take care of everything on the outside, inside, change the light bulb, fix the leaks under the sink, all that. So that's why these developments like this are perfect because it's just basically no stress living. I mean, you got everything taken care of for you. And then plus, you know, you're amongst people your same age, don't got a bunch of kids running around, love kids, I have three myself, but, you know, the seniors, they wanna live in a community where it's people like them. And this is why these are perfect. And this tax credit program to me is perfect for these developments because, I mean, who needs the help more than a senior who, you know, restricted incomes?
You said you needed, it was gonna take about $3 million to close the gap for you to make this. Is that, do those federal credits close that gap fully? Do you anticipate having to ask for more assistance?
We're having a request for, compared to maybe a multifamily development, we have, we're having a request for more credit to make this deal work. And so we're basically, like the, there's like 6 million in credit. Basically, we're gonna probably request for 9 million. So, you know, because of it being just a little bit more expensive to do a development like this, and that's why, you know, there's only enough funds for one in this whole region, which there should be more. It's a big region. This, this region six is always, or this region three has always been real competitive. Basically, all the smaller towns all around the Dallas-Fort Worth area, they're all locked into that one little region three. A whole bunch of these little towns and they're all fighting for that one development. One city will get the funding. I believe maybe in the last few years, Ennis has received them. And then this year, just the way that the scoring, obviously, y'all see, y'all had four applications here. Stevensville is the highest score region this year. So that's not every year. You know, next year, it's gonna be somebody else. And even if Stevensville was a high-scoring, you know, the land price and everything going up so much, I mean, it might not be cost-effective to do something like this in a while. So we just felt like now is a good opportunity for the city.
What's your timeline?
We would start construction and we're thinking it'd be like late 20, you know, in the 2022, early 2023. So as soon as possible, because there's definitely a great need for this. So we would much appreciate y'all's support. Any other questions?
Any final questions, anybody? Mr. Mayor?
Do you have, is the tax credit program, is it also exempt you from at-bom tax?
No, it's, everything would be fully taxed. I know, I know there's sometimes there might be some developments that might tie a nonprofit to their structure and their fee of tax reduction, but not this. This would be fully taxed. There's no nonprofit attached to this deal.
Sir, you said it was age-restricted. If you didn't, if you said I didn't catch, what is that age?
55 and older.
You and I qualify.
Yes, you are. 55 and over. Will that be pretty strictly enforced?
Oh, 100%. I mean, because I could promise you, and as my friend here, Scott, that they'll turn people in. Or, I mean, when you apply, yeah, of course, but, you know, there's always issues with, you know, people bringing over people that are like under that age, but there's like a three-day max in a row limit that you could bring visitors and stuff like that over. And I could promise you, if it's not the manager catching it, the residents will catch it. You know, so you don't have to worry about that. And then, you know, it's kind of the, the great thing about the tax credits, you know, you have investors in, plus the state. They're coming over every year, inspecting these units, making sure they're all perfect, pristine condition. I should have attached some pictures of our deal in Huntsville, which is about 20, 25 years old now, and it looks like it's brand-new from day one. So, you know, I wish I would have attached some of those so y'all could see. I mean, there's, you won't see any kind of deterioration from these mainly because you've got two people always on your neck. You know, always checking up on you, checks and balances, you know, you've got government red tape and plus the guys that bind your credits, you know, they're always on you, you know, giving, you know, inspections. So you're not, you're not gonna have a dilapidated, you know, development here in a few years. That's not gonna happen.
So this is licensed and inspected by the state, ain't it?
They come out and inspect and then plus your investors won't be coming out inspecting.
I want to clarify that. It's not, it's not licensed. It's not a licensed location.
No.
It's not licensed by the state of Texas.
No, no, sir.
You said that you, you have the one in Huntsville. Did, did your company build the one in Huntsville?
Yes.
So you've maintained it and operated it for the last 25 years?
Yes, sir, and probably the same manager for the last 25 years, too. So. And then, you know, and we kind of, the developer's wife oversees all of them, too, and that's been the case since 1989.
Is that the case with most of your developments like this?
All of them.
Anybody else?
Wait, I'm over my 10 minutes.
Probably I forgot to look at the office.
One more. Do you, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. He was just raising his hand. He wanted to speak.
May I say something to the Senate Council, please?
Absolutely.
If you'll come to the microphone, give it your name and address. We'll get you on record that way.
My name is Scott Dickerson. I'm a board member for the last nine years with Wade Bienski. And please remember that the senior population is really exploding and we need to accommodate our seniors the best affordable way that we can possibly afford for our seniors. Everything's going up and seniors are looking for not so much high-rises, multi-problems, single-units to accommodate our seniors because someday, you young people that are in here today are gonna be looking for something. You have probably elderly parents that may be looking for a place for a single unit. So please remember that, you know, if we end this. I've been out on some of his properties the last nine years. And what I do while he's taking care of the manager and the tenants with the programs that they're offering, I walk the property, I check the conditions of the property, I ask the tenants himself. Are you being treated fairly? Are you getting the services from the management and the company on a regular basis? And are they giving you information for senior citizen activities and other programs that are available, whether it's the city or county? That's what I try to do. I want to get a feedback from these people. I've been doing this on and off for nine years. And I'll tell you, it's an A-plus the way these guys are running. Wade has a very good rapport with all his managers and just about all the tenants. And you know, wherever you're gonna live, you're gonna have your pet peeves, you're gonna have a few issues, but they stay on top of it the nine years that I've walked these properties. So that's what I wanted to say to all of you, and I want to appreciate your time, all of you. Thank you very much.
Geraldine, I'll probably sign up here real quick.
Don't be insulted, buddy. I'm a senior.
We are.
From multi to a single unit. And we want to accommodate the seniors because they've done their job. Now we need to hold back from the seniors to take care of them. But thank you again, gentlemen, ladies.
Glad you come up here and do the presentation.
I'm 36 years in the retail business and sales, so.
He's taking your sign.
Do you offer different levels of, and I don't know what to call it, care or accommodations or?
No, no, it's, no assistant. It's not like an assisted living. It's, it's basically kind of like the step before that. I mean, basically, the best that we do is we have the, the man, the maintenance person out there basically take care of all the issues as far as exterior, interior, stuff like that. But no, like assisted living, care, anything like that that we would offer. But just, you know, we do, would offer weekly activities. It's kind of built into the funding as well, which is another great thing about the, the funding that we requested. You know, there's requirements to provide like services to the residents, which other apartments might not have to do, but with the tax credits, you have to provide services. And then again, like we're offering the open-up that community building, which doesn't show it on there, but it'll be a large meeting area that would be open to anybody in Stevensville. And we think that would be a good asset for town because it's kind of on the other side of town from the existing senior center, so it might be good for people that live on that side of town. Especially now that gas prices going back up.
All right. I appreciate it very much. Is there no more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Daniel Saylor, I believe his development is, is called Stevensville Loft, Lofts.
And my name's actually Jake Mooney. I'm one of the owners, the owners of MRE Capital. We actually have the owners for the development, Sarah Andre and this is Dan Saylor here. So, look a little bit different, but I think it's important to, I guess, tell you a little bit who we are before I get into what we want to do. But we, as a development team, have been involved in about 11,000 affordable workforce housing units and about $850 million in development over the last 12, 15 years. We own and develop property in Missouri, Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas. Recently, we've done deals in everywhere, everywhere from Canyon, Texas, up by Amarillo, down to Harlingen and Brownsville in the Valley. We've done deals in Cisco, Plainview. We're, we're looking at doing one up in Wichita Falls, Slaton, Clyde. We're very familiar with towns of this size. We've done a lot of historic developments in the state of Texas. I think it's important, so I grew up in the kind of free lunch and tax credit environment as a kid. And I take great pride in what we do. We've never sold a development that we've ever done. We own 100% of the developments we've, we've, we've built. And I, and I am proud of them because I understand this program, unlike the HUD program of the past, it really is a hand-up versus a hand-out, which is, is really important because you create citizens that want to be in, in, in the town and you, and can grow and increase their income and work their way into either market-rate housing or single-family housing. So it's a, it's a great stepping stone, just like it was for my family growing up. My dad was an airplane mechanic and I like to say the only thing he gave me was his name. And so right on our website, you know, we say reputation is before returns. And I can always go out and make another dollar, but I can't get the one thing my dad gave me, which was my name back. So that's who we are. That's what we really believe in. And, and like I said, we do take great pride in what we do. And a lot of our program is gonna be very similar to any other applicant, providing services, you know, rents in that kind of $700 a month rent range. You know, we're, we're electric, water, sewer, are all there onsite, paid for by the tenant. I think what sets us apart is with this development, we're doing ground floor commercial. So there will be no residential on the first floor of the development. It'll be a four-story elevator building. Second, third, and fourth floor would be residential. That's where the apartments would go, 60 apartments. The first floor would be no residential, all commercial. So I know you guys have had problems in the past with people saying we're gonna do a bunch of commercial and it not happening. I think Steadco's involvement with them selling us a piece of the ground and an agreement we'll sign with them will, will give the city the assurance that they need to know that, you know, we're not just up here giving lip service. So that's, that's a big difference because this is a unique opportunity for the council, for the development committee, is that you do have an opportunity to look at what that particular development can do to be a catalyst for other development, you know, around that site or for the city of Stevensville. And, you know, even though I know there's a desire for that lot to be 100% commercial, you know, there's still an acre and a half on that side of the road that, you know, is a good out parcel. It could be a standalone restaurant, standalone office. And then there's two and a half acres across the street that would also be 100% commercial next to the townhomes that are being built or about to be built. So the most important thing in driving commercial development is, is rooftops. How many people live within certain distances? You know, and this being what we believe is a catalyst for future development and for gentrification of an area that, that needs it. You know, we, we think that that component of the commercial and residential has the opportunity to create kind of a one plus one equals three environment where, where we're getting more benefit out of that, out of those dollars that are being attracted to the city of Stevensville. So the, I, I, you know, really, I just want to open it up to questions about the specific development or about us as a company or who we are. But that's, that's what we're proposing and we would, you know, appreciate your support in attracting those dollars to town because the opportunity may not exist, you know, next year, the year after that, because it is a big area, just like the previous presenter said. And a lot of what he said is, you know, I'd echo the importance of, of the opportunity that the, the group has here. So with that, I'll just kind of open it up to questions and, you know, see, see what we can come up with.
All right. I'm gonna start off. So retail mix, and I've had a conversation with the president of Steadco about this, and that is part of their agreement to sell it would be mandatory that it is commercial on the bottom. But what are we talking about? Number of businesses, square footage, types of businesses that we're talking about commercial there?
So in all of our historic developments in the state of Texas, we've done commercial on the ground floor. We've done restaurants. We've done insurance offices. We've done bakeries. We've done, let's see, we've done mortgage lenders. You know, I, I think that what, what's important is that when we utilize these credits for the overall development, we can drive down the overall basis for the whole development to create spaces for more local businesses that can't necessarily afford to be right on- create spaces for more local businesses that can't necessarily afford to be right on the highway where you got a big national chain coming in and are paying, you know, top dollar for signage and visibility. We can create through that driving down the basis, utilizing the tax credits for the whole development, a opportunity to create some potentially below market rents for businesses. But the square footage is probably going to be north of 15,000 square feet. So I would like to have an anchor on one of the corners where it gets more visibility from that highway traffic, something that's maybe 4,000 square feet. But then I'm imagining the remaining commercial retail office being, you know, longer, 800 to, you know, 1,200 square foot block. So it'd be a concrete, you know, free span first floor with stick built above. That gives some flexibility when attracting tenants and working with Steadco, EDC to see who's out there and looking for space. So.
So they would benefit rental-wise too?
Not directly from the tax credit program, not through TDAHCA. There is no dollars that go to that component. What we'll do is we'll treat it as essentially two different developments. Ground floor and then that top floor. But what we end up doing is leveraging those funds to put off some of those design costs, some of those land costs, some of those infrastructure costs onto the residential component where a freestanding commercial building there would incur 100% of those costs for the land, for the infrastructure. You know, and so that's how it drives down the basis. It's not a, there's no subsidy from the state that goes into that space directly. So and we also would be, you know, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, open to families, so any age. There's no age restriction. And we'd also have some market rate in there. You know, rents would be, you've got kind of 300 to 800 and then for the affordable component and then 700 up to about 950 or so for the market rate component. This is not student housing. You know, it is intended for, you know, people that work in the community. You know, I was told that of the 1,500 employees at the university, that a good chunk of them, a majority don't live in Stevensville because they can't afford to, can't find the housing. This is an opportunity for that. So, you know, that's where we are. We also pay taxes. I'd assume we pay, you know, 50 to 60, probably on the residential component alone, around $40,000 a year. The commercial component would probably be another, you know, I'd say 15 to 20. So depending on how that rents out and everything else. But, you know, there's a good tax dollars there. There's the purchase of the land from Steadco that puts money back into, albeit a private, you know, EDC. Funds that can be used to attract, you know, other businesses to town. And like I said, kind of create that environment where one plus one can equal three. And it's not just a state incentive that benefits, you know, one piece of property, but can be that catalyst to effect and lift up, you know, a neighborhood as opposed to, you know, one particular lot.
All right. Any questions?
What's the total development cost? Around 15 million. You know, we're going through some of those trials right now determining how that ground floor would look and. So are you going to have to do similar things as far as asking for additional funds? Yeah, we're all, anybody that would be applying would be asking for about that 9 million. Okay. So that's kind of why it's important to, for some reasons, choose one or determine who the winner's going to be because it allows all the development groups to go out and ask for those additional funds that bring additional value to, you know, the city.
What is the income level for this one?
Same income levels that are the previous presenter mentioned. It's that kind of 27 because we've got those three bedrooms and we're doing more, you know, 40%. So we can go a little bit higher, you know, maybe up into the mid 30s.
Be the max income level?
Yeah. And the difference, real quick, in the way that the program works is, and if I'm preaching to the choir, you can just stop me. But the old program, pre-1986, was what people think of when they think of affordable housing, which is Section 8 HUD. That was a program where developers would go to the federal government and say, I need $1,500 a month rents to do this $10 million development. And the trade-off was the government would say, well, we'll guarantee your rents, but your tenants can, you know, only pay a certain percentage of their income. So the tenant can only afford $100. The federal government picks up the rest. And so this is not what we're doing. This is not what any of us are doing. It is, it's an affordable housing development where the development basis is brought down by these tax credits that we sell off to Fortune 100 companies. And by driving that down, the trade-off is you can only rent to this maximum income level. So when we say rents, you know, 500 bucks a month or $600 a month, that's the rent. There isn't a mechanism that we have that we can say, oh, hey, you can only afford 100. So, you know, somebody else is going to pick it up. There's nothing that we have to do that. So there's an affordability that the tenant has to make, has to hit to be able to live there. You know, kind of the joke we make is that during the day, there's no cars in our parking lot because you have to have a job to be able to afford the rent. So, you know, that's what we're planning on developing, so. And you do have to be full-time, right? You have to be, I believe, yeah, yeah, income you do, yeah. So you have to be able, you have to be able to afford that rent. So, you know, we usually take, on a development that has 100 units, we would take 400 applications because of, just like anybody else would. Because you have to pass, you know, criminal background checks, credit background checks, past renter background checks. And usually it takes about four times the number of units we've got in applications to fill a development because we're all very picky and want to have, you know, we're all going to own these developments for, you know, the next 15, 20, 30 years. And, you know, so you build them right from the beginning, just like anybody up here would. And you build them for the long haul and you're particular about who you let move in. So there's a rigorous, you know, review that goes into that. And the management company would be Mayfair. They're based out of Dallas. They've got offices in Dallas, San Antonio, down in the valley. They're actually the management company that when the state agency has an issue with the property, they send Mayfair in to fix it. So they are excellent. They're here. And they manage our entire Texas portfolio.
Is the program, the tax credit program, is in competition, obviously, they're going to have one? Does the city, are you expecting the city to make a, pick a winner tonight? Or can we endorse both? Or is it?
You know, if you endorse both, out of honesty, if you divorce, if you endorse both, you know, we win. If you, if you support one, if you support us, we win. If you support only the previous presenter, then they win. So that's the way that the program works. That's why it's an opportunity for city council and the development committee is you do have the power to say, this is what we want. This is what we think is best for the city. If you do nothing, of course, you can't rent and none of the dollars come to town. So in the application process, there's hundreds of points. There's, you know, there's a point for incomes to you. There's a point for, you know, schools. There's points for, there's 17 points for this, you know, letter of resolution of support from the city. So it's a big enough difference that whoever gets that letter wins. In a tiebreaker between these two developments, if we both got those 17 points, then we would win. But, you know, again, it's, to some degree, it's not about what we want because you guys have this opportunity to do what you believe is best for, you know, long-term development in the city here, so. You know, we just ask that you help, you know.
How many units did you say? I'm sure you said, I missed.
60.
60.
Yep.
15,000-ish square foot of commercial.
Commercial, yeah. Whether it's retail office, you know, mixed, it's not going to be, I just know it won't be 100% retail or, you know, we've done, like I said, the restaurants. We've had restaurants in some of our developments that we've opened. We helped subsidize, get going in different towns and they're sustainable. And we've done percentage revenue leases because we've had that ability because of leveraging all the different funds to, you know, either ride the ups and the downs with, you know, with the tenant, so.
Paint us a picture. What does it look like?
What does it look like? Stone or brick veneer first floor, you know, lap, you know, a concrete type lap siding above. We tend to use a higher contrast between a trim, windows and the siding. So we've done blues with whites to kind of create that, you know, that pop. And then the first floor, a lighter, you know, like a limestone type stone veneer. And then the parking goes around it there, around the site. But it's one long building that's in the same direction there as the highway. So you'd see it from both sides, four stories tall. You hip roof with parking around. So you try to focus most of the parking for residential on the backside. So you still have some signage on the side that faces the highway, but access to that commercial will be from the other side of the building that doesn't face the highway, so.
Talk to me about how you, because parents send their kids off to college and they, you know, I'm not going to claim you anymore so that you can go take advantage of all of these benefits. How do you, how do you guarantee that this doesn't turn into student housing? Or that this?
It specifically cannot, students are specifically forbidden from being part of a Section 42 tax credit as a renter, just like military is. And the argument there is that when they created the program, they said there already is military housing programs out there. There already are student housing programs that are out there. So they specifically took those two groups and said, you don't apply.
Does our building code not restrict buildings to three stories?
No, it's a certain height.
55.
55.
It's 55 feet.
Four stories is going to exceed that.
Depending on the way it looks, a story is anywhere from 10 to 15 feet. So depending on how it's built, it could.
It'd be, you know, nine to 10-foot ceilings on the first floor and then usually nine-foot ceilings above. So we're averaging about 10-foot a floor. So we'd be at four stories, it'd be 40 feet with that hip roof style that keeps it underneath the, you know, underneath 50.
Mr. Hugby, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why, if it's a tie, do you win?
Because in that point system, it goes to a tiebreaker, which is based on proximity to the most recent development that was awarded tax credits and we're further away.
Okay.
So it's, I wish I had a.
That's the fifth, the third, fourth, fifth tiebreaker?
That's the third. No, the second. Never.
Guys, there's, yeah, there's not a, there's not a good reason. There's not a, there's not, there's not a, there's not a reason that I can say is more virtuous.
That's how government works.
You know, we have more virtue because of this component of the development. It's not, it's not that. It's not that special.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted, and I would like to ask the other developer the same thing, but I'm assuming, I mean, I know your landowner in this particular spot is here, but I'm assuming you have a contingent contract in place.
Correct.
Just doesn't, that doesn't fall through?
I did talk to Mr. Horton with Steadco and they've got an agreement in place, but they would only do the agreement with the guarantee of the commercial aspect in it.
I've talked to him as well.
Yep.
So that's part of their contract, which they have to have their land to be able to do this. And I'm okay if you want to ask the other guy.
I was going to let this one, I was going to let this one.
Any other questions?
Exterior wise, I'm just, you know, you're talking about a, it's a one building. You're going to have commercial on the bottom floor. Okay, the rest of it's going to be apartments, lofts, one to three bedroom type thing. And the way you described it is going to look really nice. What's the landscaping in the outside and the, are there going to be playgrounds because there's kids? I mean, all the other kind of stuff.
Yeah, so.
Because we're talking about off of a couple of busy roads.
Yeah, so we'll work a playground, some amenity space into the development. We'll also have the onsite manager, onsite maintenance. And we'll have a playground that will work into landscaping to make sure it is protected and has easy access from the building. You know, we're envisioning this being more, you know, less family, more young professional, maybe one kid, single folks. But we will still provide those types of amenities, just like anybody else would where it's a playground, you know, and those types of sitting areas.
Outside entry, inside entry.
It would probably be an interior initially. It goes up to a corridor that would be, you know, more of an open air between the second, third, and fourth floors. So it's a enclosed interior entry that goes in and then up through the building. Because we will do balconies. We round off the corners to do, you know, so that when you're in a three-bedroom, typically on the corners, you look out to the side at 45 degrees so that you don't have views of neighbors. And so we will do balconies with usually a sliding door or fridge doors that open into a living room. It's living room, kitchen combination. We like to do a lot of angles so that we don't have just square boxes. You know, yeah.
Yeah.
That's where we're getting in.
Yeah, no, and yeah, it is, you would not be able to differentiate between a Class A market rate apartment complex and our development, second, third, and fourth floors.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ricky, you may ask another gentleman.
Yes, to the other presenter, I had the same question. I assume you have a contingent contract in place with the landowner in your location.
Goes back to him.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Barnes?
No, sir.
That will include the development services portion of this.
Okay, we'll recess the city council meeting, or excuse me, the council committee meeting and enter into a city council special meeting we called for tonight. We have four items on the agenda. The first is consider approval of resolution support for subsidized housing applications discussion.
I think those are both worthwhile projects. I think we need housing in both these areas. 65 or 55 and up and we know we need workforce housing because we've got so many new things opening here and so many restaurants that are understaffed and stores that are understaffed. So I think they're both needed in this community.
I think that is the one thing I hear consistently. And I would say I hear it even more in the senior area because of rents, because of college kids and where that takes that, that, you know, people that are seniors are on disability. It's an issue. But I know it's an issue for single parents and things of that nature that are, they're fighting the same battle. And, you know, that there's value to be seen in both products. Having the commercial part of it is, to me, is, you know, is attractive as well. But I, of course, we started getting all these and it started all, we all started having these conversations because we've never had these presentations before. I don't think maybe some of the people that have been on council longer, but not since I've been here.
It never came this far.
It's never come this far.
Say so.
But I do think it's something that we have to think very hard about because I do think we have a housing issue, or we know we have a housing issue. And can this be part of that pie to help us fix it? You know, I think it's needed. I don't, I, it's hard to listen to both those presentations and tell you which one I think right now is most needed.
Anybody else?
Do we know if the age restricted will accommodate disabled persons as well? Or instead of, if they don't meet the age restriction?
It's just completely age restricted, 55 and older. Like, are you saying like if someone is disabled under 55, you know, so it's 55 and up only?
If they are 55 and up and have disabilities, would they be accommodated in your facility?
Yes, sir, of course. I mean, we have, the way that the units are designed, it's basically handicap. You know, there'll be some units that actually the state requires a certain amount that we made available for disabled. that we made available for disabled. But basically, the way the units are designed, it's perfect for someone with disabilities or handicap, you know, accessibility issues, because that's the way they're all designed. They're larger units, 850 square feet for one, over almost 1,100 square feet for two. So nice, open rooms, big, wide bathroom, downstairs, entryways that'll make it more accessible.
Okay, thank you. That would accommodate junior, Warper, Mayor.
If you're digging. A wheelchair. Anybody else?
Yes. Could I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
With regard to your project, what's your timeline on it? The other guys gave us theirs.
Same timeline as the, hopefully, we need to get through, you know, a PDE process.
So starting construction in 2022?
Ideally, we're starting construction in November, December. I wouldn't be surprised if that, you know, goes into January, February of 2023. And then it's about a year, year to 14 months of construction. Assuming we're done with global pandemics. Yeah.
Sure. Anybody else?
Certainly, I think both of these projects are worthwhile. I had a lot of questions about, about you guys' project, and answered, and certainly did so adequately. I, you know, I wish we could just approve both and the state would award both. I wish the state would award both.
Sounds like the win on the third tiebreaker.
But, you know, I certainly, I know of several seniors who have had to move out of Stevensville because the only thing they could afford was some sort of a subsidized housing, and it's not available here. Likewise, I'm sure there's plenty of families who have had to leave because they couldn't afford to live here either. So I don't really have any groundbreaking thing to say there, other than this is a hard decision. But I appreciate both, both projects for coming forward, and I think they're both worthwhile.
I was going to comment here with the chair. The, I'm in the, have been and am in the senior care business. And so obviously, I have a tendency to lean towards that type of service. One of the things that happens, and I don't know if everybody up here has a rental house, but a bunch of us do. And because, I mean, you, I mean, you probably need to advertise a newspaper, a rental house. You just put a sign out, sometime you have to put a sign out, you know, somebody already knows it's coming open and they call you, say, get a rent it. And what that does is obviously with accessibility, what are our rents doing? It's easy because there's a demand. And so with senior housing, I, most of you know that I was involved in the development of Good Tree Retirement Community. And I can tell you that senior housing is a major issue. And it's a thing where it takes, I think, you're right, people leaving town because of that. And so what's the city need? The city needs housing, period. And what group is needed the most, what's the most vulnerable, I think, right now, are seniors. I had a good visit today with someone from Catholic Charities Fort Worth, and we talked about senior housing. And I think, you know, the purpose was for her to find out, what are we planning on doing here? And I totally just come and listen. But I tell you that my opinion is senior housing is the greater need right now for housing. We're going to be building houses, and with those, it doesn't mean that people can afford them either. So, you know, but I'll tell you, senior housing is a major issue right now.
I think something to point out is that we're not age restricted, and we have elevator access. And so we can accommodate, you know, families, through seniors. So it's, it is covering a wider range of the need.
Appreciate that. Anybody else?
Mayor, are we on the timeline in that?
Yes, there's March 1st, they have to have it in hand, their application is due March 1st.
And they have an endorsement or support from the city council?
Well, they have to turn their applications March 1st, period, whether or not they have an application from us. I've had two of our state legislators contact me asking, because they've also contacted them and asked for their support. And both of those asked, what are y'all going to do? They'll support what we do. Any other discussion? What?
That was their easy way out, huh?
No, I think it's what it is to represent City of Stevensville.
Yeah.
I spoke with one of them and they're, what they said was, we're closest to the people and they would like to support whatever the people want.
They work with the same people.
We're just closer.
Somebody else?
That bullet wasn't even fired and they dodged it.
Do I hear a motion?
Do you need one for each?
Well, we, we can support both, a lot of our support for both. What they've told us is that's not going to help make the decision. So we need, I think, my recommendation would be that we support one or the other.
I guess what I'm asking is there's two resolutions on the ballot, so do we have to deny one of them if we?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have to. So, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, he's already spoken.
So what you're saying is, it doesn't matter, I mean, we can, if we vote for both of you, we're just not the bad guy. Somebody else is going to be the bad guy until the other person knows, is what, I mean, I'm just asking an honest question.
Yeah. There's this gentleman sitting in this room right now that wants you to not act because he's in Corsicana. And if you don't act, they get the money.
Well, so, so the, I think it's important, I think it's important that, if you support both, both applications could move forward, we could just as easily make a mistake in the application, fall behind in points, and then, and then the next deal is awarded. If, 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 if you only supported us and not the senior, then if we messed up in the application, those funds go to Corsicana because they're too far behind in points. So supporting both.
You're not helping this process.
But it's not, not making it an easy run, guys, but I'm fine.
Public testimony is over with, okay, let's make a decision. Do I hear a motion from the council?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion, approve the resolution for retirement, retirement living for seniors limited. And that's 2022 R.
Zero four.
Zero four.
Okay, we have a motion for a second.
Did you, I want to make sure I understand you're recommending, or you're making the motion to support the ones, which is the first one in our agenda for retirement living for seniors. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second?
Discussion?
Further discussion?
My only thing is us learning this and learning more about this process even tonight, that if we just award one of them and there is a mistake, we end up with none of them. Right?
No. No. I'm just, someone's going to speak, I said.
I'm looking to go, but that's the way I understood it.
Yeah.
Correct?
That's what I heard.
If we award it to both, it's probably not going to go to Corsicana.
Further discussion, another question?
I think there's some, I, I think there's a little merit to that, I really do. And then.
Non-support or non-opposition to one or more, you lose three points, but you still get ahead of Corsicana.
Yeah.
If one of them didn't mess up.
Sorry to the guy on the other place.
So you maybe the one that you prefer to support, you take it one, no opposition. And then that way you kind of follow.
Okay, I'm going to ask the two of y'all to come back up here, and we're going to talk about that issue. Since the question is, who do we support? So why don't you and you come back up here and let's talk about that issue. Can you tell there's some consternation about what to do?
Yeah, I mean, basically.
Hey, get back up, somebody here on recording, we'll put you on recording. Well, explain what you just said.
If you do a resolution for board, you get, I think, 17 points, and if it's no opposition, it's 14 points. But that 14 points would still be higher than Corsicana, which they're like eight points behind. So then, you know, you give priority to the one that you prefer. Something happens with that one, then that no opposition one would still be ahead of Corsicana.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah.
So what you're, so what you're saying then is, we could make a, we could give a preference tonight and not oppose the other one, but that still would be in an ordinance?
Yeah, that would.
Both of those would have to be in an ordinance?
If we do a resolution, I got it.
Could we do a resolution for both of them? Support them both?
You could support them both, but you're picking one if you do that.
Yeah.
How would you be picking?
Because he's further away than the pie. Yeah.
Well, that would be their issue.
So the question is, so what you, what your recommendation?
We come out with, the least we come out with one.
What's your recommendation, we finish this? So what you're saying is, we could choose, we could choose tonight, somebody, and then through ordinance, also not oppose the other one, what would that take?
Do you have a resolution of no opposition?
No opposition, so we could do that tonight, and support one and not oppose the other. And that would be, it'd be three points difference between the two, of course.
If you're going to choose one, the smart thing to do for the other one would be to at least do a letter of no opposition. So if you're going to choose one, the second one, you should, you should do a letter of no opposition to make sure it stays ahead of Corsicana.
Okay, so we've had a, the individual made the motion, would like to make an amended motion to do that. How do we do that?
This has to be done in one vote?
That's a good question, Randy.
Well, I don't, you've got a motion and a second.
But you know that you need to withdraw it. You can withdraw it?
You can withdraw it, otherwise you need to take action.
Can, can we, can we pass this resolution and then do a second motion for the other one as a resolution of opposition?
I understand all that stuff, yes.
I mean, is that, does that, that's essentially going to be the same thing?
You can do it by parliamentary procedure, yes. I'd rather do it that way than tie them together in a single resolution.
That makes it very clear.
Okay, so we have a, so you don't want to withdraw it?
Mayor, just for the sake of clarity, I asked the gentleman with the project in Corsicana, these gentlemen are correct. He's the loser.
No comment.
But a good loser.
Why would it be treated this way if it could have just stayed home?
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor, further discussion. Here now, a proceeded vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Let's do a roll call, place one.
Hey, we're still a committee on this?
No, we're in council.
When, okay. Okay, I guess I missed that, sorry.
We've got a roll call, place one. Place two. No. Place three.
No.
Place four.
Aye.
Place.
Five.
Aye.
Place six.
Yes.
Place seven.
Yes.
Place eight?
No.
Yes, that is, I count five to four, five to three, is that right?
Three.
Okay, five to three, okay, motion passes. Do I hear a second motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, pass resolution 2022 R, oh, is it five? She got five? As a resolution of no opposition to Stevensville Lofts.
Second there.
We have a motion, a second, further discussion. Proceed, vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes, so we'll have one support and one not, and opposition. I guess we're probably up to these because you guys gave us ordinances, suggested ordinances. We should probably get some feedback from y'all on how to do that. A resolution, excuse me.
Yes.
I don't want to, I apologize, but a resolution, give us some feedback on how to do that. What wording you'd like to have, because you're the ones filling out the application. Okay, you'll get that Stacy or Jason? Appreciate it. All right, next item, consider approval of ordinance enacting a tax free for residents over the age of 65 or disabled. Alan.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, do we have a copy of the ordinance?
I do not. Stacy, may.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
It's Miller.
Uh, so, how'd you send it? My computer did.
Order is tax free.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, my.
Thank you.
Be safe, go home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, do you have a copy of that? Do you have access to a copy of that?
Order number 65, tax exempt.
Did you ever, did you receive a copy of it? I did not.
I think we did. Let me look and see if I can.
Okay.
My iPad.
Oh, it's coming back on now. It's really blown late.
Did you read the ordinances or explain the ordinance to us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The heading of the ordinance is City of Stevensville, Texas ordinance, number, I don't have that. An ordinance adopting a tax limitation on residents, homesteads, persons who are over 65 years of age or older, and other matters incident and relating thereto, and providing an effective date. Mr. Mayor, what this does is Article 3 of the Texas Constitution authorizes the city, in this case, to adopt a tax limitation on the residence, homesteads, steds of persons who are over 65 years of age or older, as determined as defined by Texas Property Code. The wherethes in this are, whereas the city council of Stevensville has determined that it would be benefit to the residents of Stevensville, Texas, to adopt a tax limitation on the residence, homesteads of those who, of those persons who are 65 years of age or older. And whereas the City of Stevensville, Texas finds and determines that the actions herein described are in the best interest of the residents of the city, bid therefore now ordered by the city council of City of Stevensville, Section 1, that the recitals set forth are true and correct. Section 2 pursuant to the authority granted to the city in Section 1-B, subsection H, Article 8 of the Texas Constitution, that there hereby is adopted a tax limitation on residents, homesteads, persons 65 years of age or older. Section 3, that the tax limitation adopted herein shall be administered in accordance with Section 11 dot 261 Texas Property Code, that provides the amount of taxes imposed on the residence, homestead, a person 65 years of age or older, are limited as provided therein. Section 4, that it is hereby officially found and determined that the meeting at which this order is adopted was open to the public, and public notice of the time and place and subject matter of the public business to be considered at such meeting was given as required by law. Mr. Mayor, this was posted as required by law.
Questions?
Are we doing a separate one for the disabled?
That's what I was going to bring up. When, when we first did it, I think we had the over 65, and Jennifer Carey mentioned that we do do over 65 and disabled. And so I believe the wording on that would have to be changed to include disabled.
No, you can do it separately.
So we could pass the 65 tonight and come back next month with, or the first with a disabled?
Yes, we can bring a post-ordinance for permanently disabled individuals. In fact, I drafted one that had them together, and I drafted, withheld. I drafted one separately. So I remember, I thought, yes, we could do that.
You drafted the disabled one or did not draft the disabled one already?
Yes, I did draft one by separate, I drafted one of them together.
I mean, so, I mean, Randy, I'd assume his language is almost identical, isn't it? I mean, just besides, we're going to take out.
And you did post it as disabled too.
That's how the agenda is, yes.
Yeah, I believe you can do it now if you want to.
That would be my vote.
Yeah, I agree.
Fair motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance adopting the tax free for 65 and disabled.
Second. Second.
Two, zero, two, two, oh, three.
Two, zero.
Two, two, zero.
Two, two, zero.
Two, zero, two, two, oh, three.
Any further discussion? Proceed, vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion passes. Next item, consider approval of resolution authorizing financing agreement for the purpose of procuring police vehicles related equipment. So you draw the short straw, huh?
I did, I promised that we'll make it a little easier than the last couple of ones. Members of council, Mr. Mayor. We'll see one slight change in the recommendation from the staff report that you have here. To give you an overview, we were attempting to purchase five police Tahos that we budgeted for last year. And as the broken record sounds, due to COVID and supply chain issues, the cost for those have come up considerably compared to what we budgeted for. And we. up considerably compared to what we budgeted for. And we, meeting the city staff and the city manager and everything, we would like to actually recommend that we continue our, our current practice of financing the vehicles themselves and then ask for an additional budget allotment for paying the equipment out completely with that. So, and that additional amount is actually $31,883.96 in lieu of financing the entire amount over the next four-year period.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What that does is this year it would lower our, our payment below the budgeted amount. Next year it would raise it above what we traditionally allocate for the, the purchase of the vehicles. And as Captain Gresham said, after conferring with us, Monica and I feel that it's in the best interest of the city to outright purchase the, uh, equipment, the, the light bars and whatever else, uh, rather than financing those like we do the cars. And so next year we can just fall back into the inflated cost of cars.
Sorry, is there a presentation or something numerically presented here that we have?
Uh, just in the fiscal impact statement of the staff report. We have some additional figures available. Should be on page five of your...
I'll put it up on the agenda. I don't have it on mine.
Are you getting a time crunch on this?
Yes, sir, we are.
Are you on that, which agenda are you on? Are you on, are you on the committee or this, that's your, there's two different agendas.
I'll pull this up off the agenda earlier.
Yeah.
I've got it.
If you don't mind.
Regular, uh, maybe your special.
Special.
Count to me.
There it is.
So we're about $6,000 over, over what we allotted for the lease. And it would be, how much did you say for the equipment? Thirty-one thousand?
Correct. So our, we had budgeted $18,000 per vehicle to purchase the equipment. The bid for those equipment came back at $23,070.85, putting this over, just on the equipment of $25,354. And then the, the total lease payment was over $6,529.85.
So thirty, the thirty-one thousand was both of those?
Correct.
But you're not asking for money in this year's budget. That money would be in next year.
No.
That would be a budget amendment. Monica would bring.
Yeah, we're far short this year on the total for equipment was just over 25,000 for the payment, all in cash, all in now. And then there's 6,500 roughly on the lease payment. And that'll carry forward each year for the next three years.
Yeah, we've historically leased the, the vehicles themselves because there's a significant resale value in the vehicles. And obviously they have other uses in the city as well when they're done with patrol work. We have not financed the equipment because getting that money back after used police equipment and, and this equipment may stay on these cars anywhere from three to six years, depending on the model and making everything.
So the other vehicles, these are replacing vehicles and those other vehicles go to somewhere else?
These are replacement vehicles and one additional new vehicle.
What's the new vehicle for?
Uh, it's to try to keep up with the expansion. Uh, we're adding an additional officer to each shift and therefore we might have another vehicle in the week. We currently have 11 vehicles, two of which are designated for school resource officer and school K-9. So it leaves us with nine vehicles that are available. And we can have up to six officers on a shift once we become fully staffed. And keeping all six vehicles in, in good working order, not in the shop, not traveling out of town or something like that can be a challenge.
Anybody else?
So we're either, we're either over budget this year or we're over budget every year for the next four years.
Correct.
Or under this year, but over for the next three years after that.
Correct. And we, I think Monica ran the number of what the finance costs for the year, the next four years. It was like...
I think it was $5,000.
About $5,000.
So.
Do you have a normal rotation for vehicles? We've replaced three, two, four, five?
We're trying to replace the vehicles every three to four years. We're, we're trying to get to four years on them. And of course, what we see in their fourth year, the maintenance cost drastically increases on them as well. Uh, two of the vehicles that we are looking to rotate out with this purchase are spending almost as much time in the shop as they are on the street charter.
And do you know what next year's request will be for the number of vehicles then?
Four.
Okay.
Since I've been here, we've replaced anywhere from three to five vehicles a year. Um, every year, except we have one off year. And that's what them financing them for a four-year timeframe.
Yeah, the original schedule that we're on was to purchase vehicles for three years, have an off year, and then start the cycle over again. We've gone from a three-year replacement cycle where we replace a vehicle every three years. We've attempted to push that out to four years in combination with the lease.
Fair motion? Or another question?
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
And this may be in here and I just haven't found it yet. Do we make any money back when we get rid of these old ones?
Yes, they're sold at auction or they're transferred to another city department. Um, we haven't done any lately. I, I don't know exactly what those numbers are. Uh, it goes to the general fund.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification's sake, it's my understanding that the two vehicles this year, uh, that, that are serviceable, uh, one will go to the fire department, one will go to, I think it's development services or, they're both going to the fire department. Oh, one's going to the airport. I guess that's what Jason's arms out.
Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, have them kind of run live. Uh, when you put them out to pasture with the fire department or the airport, they have a little easier, a little easier go over.
And Mr. Mayor, just to clarify one thing, uh, that the captain, uh, did not mention, uh, the additional car was put in the budget for the traffic unit and it will be outfitted with radars and, and accident investigation things and whatever fancy tools they have.
Well, I hope, keep you from driving through people.
There's some additional money in the budget to buy equipment that we don't, uh, that's brand new to the vehicle. There's a lot of vehicles from vehicle to vehicle, the computer, the computer stand, radar, uh, radio, stuff like that. So the new vehicle, there's a separate line in the budget to buy equipment for the fifth vehicle that's brand new.
Is these, these four, these new vehicles, it'd be like the one that Chief was driving for a while?
That's correct.
That's pretty cool, pretty cool car.
The, the 2021 Tahos have, have performed exceptionally well.
Well, the lighting in it was pretty cool too, the way they could change the lighting, protect the officer as well as alert people.
Yeah. And that's part of the expense was switching to this new lighting. Uh, Fort Worth uses, is actually a piggyback on the Fort Worth contract for the lighting. Um, lighting's very, very good and I think it really enhances some of the visibility and safety aspects of, of the car as well.
We've seen that a lot recently.
So we're gonna finance the vehicles, lease the equipment, is that what you said?
No.
Did I get that right?
Buy the, buy the equipment, lease.
The way around.
Is this different? What, what did we do last month?
The, the original thought was that we were going to finance the entire package, which is not what we've done previously. So what this is, recommendation has gone back to is how we normally procure our vehicles through a lease of the vehicle and a purchase of the equipment. Uh, it's just that the budgetary constraint is, is current because of the cost increases.
Okay. Cause I misunderstood. I thought we were under budget when you made the presentation last month.
Uh, we did not present these to council, uh, last month.
I think it went to committee.
It, it went to committee, Mr. Hasky. And the payment, if we financed both of them, would be below what we, we allocated for this year's budget.
Okay.
However, it's my understanding that moving forward, it would exceed the amounts that, that we normally budget, Monica. Can you?
Because we had an inflated number this year?
So basically what you're hearing is you've got, instead of paying out cash for equipment and leasing, we roll it all into a financing, which causes us to be under budget this year. But then the financing, the extra equipment being financed caused, causes you to be, I think it was about 30,000 over every year for the next...
Three.
Three years. So we either pay 30,000 extra this year and save the 5,000 interest.
Why is there such a difference in this budgetary year and future budgetary years?
For, for this year, what happened, the, the, the cost of the equipment and the vehicles themselves were higher than what we've seen, uh, quite a bit. Cause usually what you're gonna see on these vehicles, you're gonna see a, a big cost in your one and then small amounts in two, three, and four.
But why is the budgeted number, that's the number we pick?
Well, because we...
Why is that number higher this year by 30,000?
They had a very small...
So why are you planning for less money next year?
Well, it's, it's a choice. So if we financed this year, we don't spend all of the money we would have spent to purchase the equipment outright, which, for instance, we budgeted $135,000 for the equipment purchase and the Tahoe lease. If we finance everything, that number is $81,000. If we bought the equipment outright and financed the Tahoe, that number is $166,000.
I think what you're asking...
You're telling me that we're gonna be over budget next year? Did you, did I, I misunderstand?
Only on these four vehicles, what we would put in the budget for these four vehicles.
So...
There's gonna be a rotating out. So next year, when we go to replace however many we place, we're, we're probably gonna be higher than two. We probably won't budget what we did this year. We'll probably increase it, cause I don't imagine our supply and demand is gonna get any better anytime soon. But when we're talking about these four vehicles, we would have budgeted and anticipated paying 6,500 less in the next three years than what we're actually wanting to happen.
So it's 30,000 total or 30,000 per year?
The budget impact, if we were to lease all portions of it, would be approximately $30,000 a year moving forward, in addition to what we would have budgeted just based on the total lease, leases themselves.
So by, by, by financing everything, we were, we're essentially deferring cost for this year's purchases to the next three years, in addition to also having to purchase next year, which will also likely be higher than we anticipate. So that's what, we're just deferring that cost to the next three years instead of taking it this year. And I, I think that's why you're saying we'll be over budget next year, is cause we're having to handle that deferred cost.
Current value versus prettiest value.
And, and please understand, the reason that, that this is so confusing is that GM, uh, this year, uh, I believe it was August 1st, July 1st or August 1st, they opened the sales of police Tahos for 30 days. The, the big suppliers, uh, the, the Caldwell countries of the world bought all of those within 30 days. Our local dealer had no shot at them. And so we're at the mercy of Lake Country and Jasper, Texas. And they're car dealers. They buy them high, they sell them higher. And so what, what we are concerned with and we're gonna work with Mr. Brunner about is hopefully in July, August, we can be prepared for him to order four cars for us for next year on hope that the council will approve it, which that's hopefully a pretty sure thing. But, but this year is just such a strange year for purchase of, of fleet vehicles. We were looking for pickup trucks that, that have been approved in the budget. There are no more fleet vehicles for, for Chevrolet until the 23s come out.
In years past, we would have come to council in October meeting with the request to purchase the Tahos themselves. We've been, spent the last four months just trying to find PDB Tahos available anywhere for purchase. And it's through our connection with our upfitter, Dana Public Safety, who said, I know a company that's bought some extra Tahos, go talk to them. And that's that Lake Country Chevrolet.
So you, they for sure have these, these vehicles for you?
Correct. Uh, he's put our name on them. Um, he does have, he, he did contact me actually earlier this week, wanting to know where we're in the process. Cause he said, basically, I've got other people now that want them. And if, if you guys are not gonna execute a agreement soon, you know.
And in all likelihood, these cars haven't even been manufactured yet.
No, not scheduled to be manufactured until early March.
So which means when, when would you take possession of, when, when would we take possession of them?
If the manufacturing schedule holds, then by the end of, end of the month in March.
Oh.
It's a wild world we're living in.
Also, to note, these are purchased under the, the TIPS purchasing co-op that the council officer are joining in January. So these are purchased price vehicles. They're not, they're not doing the old bait and switch, mark it up 10 grand. This is what they're selling to everybody.
Mr. Mayor, I think Chief Harris has some comments.
Yes, sir. Chief?
No, I, I, I mean, I think we've discovered the last few things I was gonna mention, but uh, I will talk in a minute about what we've done traffic wise, but we'll also talk about the fact that, um, you know, we're still compiling our stats from 2020. But, um, we're looking at almost 100 additional accidents in the city in 2020 and close to 20, over 4,000 calls for service in 2021, I mean. And so, um, appreciate the, you know, the digging in there. You know, just, you and I have talked about how the last thing we ever wanted to do, spend more money, is to save money and working all the year. Nothing more frustrating for the both of us, especially our police accountant, Captain Gresham, to be in this particular position. But we, if you go to the lot right now at the police department, we might have one extra fleet vehicle for an officer to drive. But we're at the point where we're about to double up on patrol. We have to put at least two in a car, so.
Well, and to give you an example of the, the timeframe, in, you know, September of 2020, you authorized the purchase of three Tahos. One of those is still being built today. We have not received...
As we speak.
We have not received, uh, the third Tahoe from the last year's budget. So the, the lead time on these is, is, it used to be like we could order them in October and be driving them in, in April. And now it's just getting farther and farther behind.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, approve Resolution 2022 R-06, authorizing the financing of the vehicles only.
Further discussion? Proceed, vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes.
Do you need a motion for the budget adjustment on the?
Do we do a budget adjustment now or do we do it later in the year?
Is that later?
We'll do it, well, just that later.
Uh, with the understanding that we have your permission to go ahead and spend the additional money on the equipment.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Your motion, recommended motion to go ahead and spend the cash, I guess, to get the equipment now.
Purchase the equipment as presented.
Alan, you second that?
Yes, sir.
And what's the amount?
Not to exceed 25,000.
Is that whatever?
30,000.
Right there.
Yeah.
31, 31.
88, 39.
How much of that is cars?
Cars themselves are...
How much of that 31 is cars?
23,000 70 dollars 85 cents per vehicle.
So we need authorization spent 24,500.
I would like an exact amount. Or at least a not to exceed amount.
Not to exceed 24,500.
Why is that different than the 23, 70?
Cause he said the cars were 65 and then it was 31.
The report says the equipment bids came in at 23,000, 07, 0.85 per vehicle.
That's fine.
Okay. Or, is that sufficient?
Yeah, the, the total overage is 31,883.96.
But some of that was vehicle.
The vehicle and equipment.
Yeah, so we're, we're passing our, and we're, we're passing the ordinance now. That's, we're budgeting just the cash. Just allow them to spend the cash on the equipment. It's 23,000. So your motion is to do it as proposed in the packet?
Make a motion to approve the budget adjustment to purchase the police equipment as presented in the packet.
Is it okay for you to do it that way?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, further discussion? Proceed, vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion passes. Chief?
Yes, sir.
So how much profile?
Okay. None, no, sir. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of council, it's always an honor to present our racial profiling report. This is the 2021, so for the calendar year of 2021, in accordance with Texas state law, Stevenville Police Department continues to engage Dell Carmen Consulting LLC to perform audits in a manner that is consistent with statistical, uh, normal practices. And it has provided this report as a means of a more detailed and reliable analysis of our traffic stops, all traffic stops for the calendar year of 2021. The data included in your attached report and then on the agenda demonstrates that the Stevenville Police Department has complied with Texas state law regarding racial profiling and all of its requirements. Furthermore, we have a comprehensive racial profiling policy. We offer information to the public on how to file compliments and/or complaints. We complete quarterly, we commission quarterly audits with Dell Carmen LLC, and we ensure racial profiling is not tolerated. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members, I am honored to report that during the calendar year 2021, the top-notch professional men and women... the top-notch professional men and women of the Stevieville Police Department received zero complaints for racial profiling and did not violate the Texas racial profiling law. In addition, no physical force was used that resulted in bodily injury during any of those traffic stops. 2021, we conducted two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three traffic stops. Again, two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three, and that's reflected on page thirteen in your attachment. I want to share a couple of more things, not all of them, because there are many different aspects in here that you can you can see there. It would take a lot of time. But page thirteen on the report reflects that of the two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three traffic stops, the individuals we stopped claimed their race or ethnicity, as five of them being Alaska natives or American Indians, twenty as Asian Pacific Islanders, one hundred and seventy-three as black, four hundred and sixty-nine as Hispanic or Latino, and two thousand two hundred and fifty-six as white. Of those stops, eleven hundred and ninety-six were female, seventeen hundred and twenty-seven male. Continuing on with some of those stats, jumping around just a little bit, of those stops, two thousand three hundred and one stops, we issued warnings. Four hundred and thirty-eight, we issued citations. One hundred and eighty-four arrests were made of all of those traffic stops. Of the two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three traffic stops, we conducted one hundred and ninety-seven searches that resulted in drugs, alcohol, and weapons, or a combination of those and a few other things that are being recovered and seized by by the Stevieville Police Department. Again, well, in conclusion, Stevieville Police Department is committed to complying with the Texas racial profiling law and has a zero tolerance to any racial profiling whatsoever. I would be happy to take any of your questions.
I just want to make a comment. I received a call from someone outside the state of outside Stevieville, actually outside the state of Texas. The call in was asking about our problem we had with racial profiling in our stops, et cetera. And I quoted this kind of information to him, and he didn't believe it was that good. And it it just goes to show the quality of your staff, those people who protect us every day. But also, I really recommend we make this public. I think I think it's I know it's public and it's here in this meeting, but
Yes, sir.
I do believe the citizens and some of those other people that call in and say, well, let me come help you with your problem. Need to understand we don't have a problem here.
Right.
And I think it's our it's our staff and you particularly, I appreciate your no tolerance position. And and I think that needs to be told to the public somehow, so, you know, somehow, Alan, if you'd help me make sure that gets out to the public.
Absolutely. We have several options where we can do that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Chief, I just want to tell you thank you for presenting this the way that you do, with the details you do. I've heard two of these others presented this week locally that were we didn't have any complaints, thank you. And that was the extent of the report. So I appreciate the depth of your report.
Well, it's my honor to brag on the men and women of Stevieville Police Department. Yes, sir.
They deserve it.
I just want to get you on the record for one thing, so no violations of the racial profiling.
Correct.
Just a couple violations of the Constitution maybe though.
No, sir.
Are you sure about that?
No, sir.
Okay, what part of the minute is she's reading?
We can talk about that.
You ought to get a court somewhere.
I thought it was opportunity to get that.
There you go. Is that some influence jury or something?
Chief, I would like to compliment you and the department because y'all do an exemplary job. And I think these numbers in this report is confirmation of that, official confirmation to us of the fact that we have known for some time. And I appreciate the professionalism and the work ethic and the quality of service that you and the department provide for the city. And I think the citizens greatly appreciate that also.
They do, yes, sir. And and we will continue to do that as some of you have done and and can do also again. And Mr. Mayor, we've talked about it, invite all of you to come get in a patrol car with me or any of the any random member of the police department and go out on a shift, part of a shift or anything like that and see them.
I recommend that.
How do you say?
Except last night.
It's a different place, yes. Y'all doing amazing job. They're validated by last night.
Anybody else?
Couldn't do without your support.
Chief, thank you very much. I understand it was just a presentation, but it doesn't require any action tonight.
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. With that, I will adjourn the special city council meeting and turn return to the committee meetings. And we're, like I said earlier, we're going to move up that one item, Public Works Committee's Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. Ah, yes, I I'm I'm sorry. Waste Connections of Texas provides our solid waste pickup and disposal for the city of Stevieville. They have done so for several years and do, I believe, an outstanding job providing service to our community. Their contract allows for an annual CPI increase based on a number of different factors. And those things are in your agenda that give the the different factors that they use to come up with that. I think Mr. Williams has been talking to representatives from Waste for several days. And they came up with what I consider to be a win for the city and for Waste at the same time. They have asked for their rate adjustment to be seven point seven six percent to the existing rate. And this is in accordance with the existing agreement. It will go up less than a dollar for the residential and less than a dollar and a half for commercial poly carts. The other rates across this across the system will also go up by the same seven point seven six percent. But they have also agreed to pay more per ton of our landfill. And they carry a significant amount of construction and demolition debris to our landfill. And they pay at that disposal fee there, just like any other customer would. Mr. Williams and I have discussed this, and we we feel like that this is a fair and equitable way for the contract to continue to move forward. They provide a better service than many of our neighboring cities enjoy because of the bulky item pickup, because of the twice a week pickup, because of the availability of their staff to help us with a number of different things, and and they have in the past. And I would ask any of the committee members if they have questions or comments on the adjustment that that is in your packet and or any other questions for Mr. Williams.
Did you did you really agree that you would make up the difference?
Monica, I ask from a budget standpoint, and we've got the money to, how do we go back to this in our budget? Because we know the CPI is going to come every year, so.
This is a pass through.
So there's strictly, strictly, there's nothing we have to pull, pick up the tab on. We're just going to automatically pass customers, that's it. Okay.
And I believe it's seven percent of everything that I feel.
Okay. No lag time on that at all.
Just so it's public, because I get asked this a lot, what would it cost to add recycling to this?
We look at that every couple of years, and we haven't done so in a couple of years now. But the last few times that we did, it was it was so much so that it hasn't been brought up since, I'll put it that way. I don't have a number.
So we're looking at. I just get asked that a lot.
Right, it's the holy.
My explanation is called Nick, because he said it's expensive. But I just wanted to give the opportunity for that to to be discussed.
Yes, sir.
Right now, right now is a horrible time to explore that with the recycle, the demand for recyclables, correct, as far as China and everything else.
It is. We've explored that in the past, and it's just because, you know, the great thing about Stevieville is we're out here in the middle of the county, kind of by ourselves. And that's also kind of the worst thing about being out here all by ourselves is that the transportation costs really would cause that recycling fee to go up significantly.
And this is going into last year, the contract, December twenty-three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Waste Connections has been a a great partner, at least throughout this negotiation, they've been really good to work with. And excited to continue the relationship with them.
Do I have a recommendation to take to the council from the committee?
Well, I recommend that we move forward with the agreement with Waste Connections.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose? No? That move that will move forward to the council with a positive recommendation, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cook, Nomination's Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three items here. First is the Main Street Advisory Board report. There's not a Main Street Advisory Board report from the Main Street group. And I I want to give you an update a little bit because there was a group from the Design Committee of Main Street and myself and met with with Alan and Encore representatives to talk about lighting replacements for downtown area. And Alan actually had initiated this originally. And the the design group had recommended some changes to our existing lights. And so it was kind of flowing together. Alan wanted to get some really information flow from Encore. We thought maybe that might be a possibility. Instead, we hit it up with not only that information and a asking them to kind of work on their deal with with the city, but also also getting some bids back on some additional lighting. These would be presented to the Main Street Board and to this committee at the next time we meet. And then you come back to the council if there's a recommendation that comes out of it. But we just wanted to give you an alert. Kelly is on top of it and is the person overseeing the Main Street right now until the staff is hired. And so we thought that was a positive thing. And what we thought was, I might add, not a doable thing. With regard to lights, because of cost, has now turned into something that we believe is going to be a very doable type project starting around this quarter. The second thing is we have on the the agenda for this committee is the review of council rules and procedures. And I think I've passed that out to, I believe, this, if we can pass this down, I think. If we can pass this group down. We were we were asked to take a look at these things and by somebody here on the council. And and frankly, if they haven't been reviewed in a long time, there are some changes that are obvious, and we might address some of those tonight. And some of them we may hold for another time. We got with staff and and they recommended some changes. For one thing, one of those changes is is the fact that it's listed in here that Alan Barnes' position is city administrator throughout this entire thing. So if we're going to update these rules of procedure, at least let's get the right nomenclature here for the people involved and and whatnot. If we start there in the in the first section in rules of procedure, by the way, I've got down on my list here, these were last updated in two thousand and eight. That may or may not be correct, but at least on my copy, that's what it says. We have a on point two point three, with regard to attendance. We show, if you'll read in the second sentence, each March and September, the city secretary should prepare an updated attendance. Roster for the city council, lords and commissions, such roster shall be included with city council agenda packets. Recommendation is that that be removed, frankly, because it's it's done on a regular basis. It doesn't need to be in there. And and I tend to agree with that. The next point is two point six, which is on page two. And you'll see that's where city manager should be changed from, I mean, city administrator should be changed to city manager on two point six. That has to do with city manager attending the meetings, which isn't changed just tonight. With regard down to the three point one, if you look there on page two, it calls for this council to have regular business meetings on the first and the third Tuesdays of each month. First and third Tuesdays of each month. In practice, what we have done is always have it on the first Tuesday and then a special called meeting on usually on the third Tuesday of the month. Either we do as we're as we as our practice currently is, or we have two full blown council meetings per month as it's called for here. So I would suggest that we take out the the and third Tuesday and leave that in as a special called meeting as we had tonight. On three point two, it has to do with special meetings. The if you'll see the the part in red, there is an addition, council members may only state the reason for the call meeting when contacting other council members. No further discussion may take place with regard to the subject or subject matters in hand. Stacy put this in, and it does, I mean, that is what we're supposed to be doing, frankly. The next paragraph would be is presently in there, and it's called the call for special meetings shall be filled with filed with the city secretary except that the announcement of a special meeting during any regular meeting at which all members present shall be sufficient notice of such a meeting. And that Stacy had suggested we take out.
Does on the majority, is it just assumed it's a simple majority?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
Unless it's declared a super majority.
Unless it's specifically stated. Under work sessions, which is three point five, again, changing administrator manager, and we just suggest that all the way through this thing. The executive sessions is more to meet our the present Texas government code. So you name out consultation with attorney deliberations regarding, you know, personnel matters, perspective gifts regarding security and so forth. This is basically language that we need to put in here to begin with. And we'd recommend that that be put in in three point six. Under three, excuse me, here. We'll go over to order of business and agenda. We usually start off here with the call to order and pledge of allegiance. And it's not on the it's not on the procedures right now, nor is the invocation on the procedures. The communications, personal appearances by citizens.
Sorry, I hate to interrupt you, but before you get too much further, I've got a copy here that was adopted in 2016 that has some of this.
Oh, do you?
Yes.
I I didn't know I had that.
Okay. We can continue to discuss the changes, but we're working off of a different copy.
Under this agenda for the city council, communications and personal appearances by citizens as number five. It was listed here as number seven, and normally we do it that way. And they have public hearings. We have the manager's report. At the bottom, bring your attention, it is not in red, but but at the at number number twelve on the agenda for the city council, council members' discussion of other matters. In here, the other matters is to discuss any items that council members may want to bring up for future consideration by the council or to make any announcements, or as we usually do, we usually thank certain people. we usually do, we usually thank certain people, we usually congratulate some if there's been something good in everything in the agenda. But also, that particular agenda item is meant for you to bring up something. So just as a point of discussion, I don't know if we need to clearly state that, but that's, that's the way it was set up originally. Under five point two, the city secretary and city administrator has a change there under And the other things are just cleanup things, striking out item three, items A through D indicate, indicated, presented, excuse me, indicated and is a, is a strike and leave presented in there. Under five point three, I think it's, the entire thing was, is recommended to be struck. And, and under five point four, consideration of requested items for consideration placement only and only submitted to the city secretary, administrator, mayor or collective committee chairman in writing by five P M. seven days in advance. And five point five, striking the last part of the last sentence. And six point one, form ordinances and resolutions should be presented to council only printed in a typewritten form. You know, we do electronics nowadays, except for Allen.
That's right.
The city attorney strikes as such, approval shall be indicated by signature on the last page of the ordinance before the presentation to council. Ordinance and resolutions should not be presented to council without first being approved by the city attorney, the recommendation. Also, city manager review on six point four shall be presented to the city council first being reviewed by the city manager. And that is, that was a recommendation of staff.
Let me ask a question there. Does that mean then that a council person couldn't make a motion from accounting committee, from a meeting, that we pass an ordinance without it being reviewed by the manager first?
Well, that's what, that's what this, that's what this recommendation says, but this is a recommendation too. This is not, and that's all I'm going over right now, is the recommendations that were put in here, but in that particular instance. But I think you want to keep the flexibility from the city council.
Mr. Mayor, actually, this is the first time I've seen these changes. I think that all ordinances and resolutions shall be reviewed by the city manager suffices, whether it's before or after.
I agree.
So if we pass, if someone introduced an ordinance tonight and we pass it.
Which we did.
But you didn't review it ahead of time.
That's correct.
So it's okay to do it that way, according to this rule?
According to the way the rule is written now, yes, sir. These changes.
Without changing this.
Yeah, without changing it.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
What it says here is it has to come to you first.
I normally do review them, I just don't sign them. But I, in the event that I don't review it, I would prefer you guys to have the flexibility to be able to pass anything you want to pass. You shouldn't, you shouldn't be held up because I didn't see it first.
Me too.
That's, that's just my opinion.
Thank you. From the manager's perspective, but the attorney becomes much more relevant from a legal.
Absolutely.
And, and also from that perspective, the attorney writes most of our resolutions or actually, I guess, ordinances.
I guess in that situation, we had one come up from council that night. We could ask Randy, how would you write this ordinance and pass it from there?
Correct.
Is that, is that just, is that, I agree with that.
Another item under six point seven on down there says roll call votes are votes which are cast individually. Voice votes will be used on all issues unless the mayor or council member require, requests a roll call vote. That's not, that's just change, a fixing of the way it's spoken. Under item six point ten, when passed by the city council ordinance should be signed by the mayor or mayor pro tem, be attested by the city secretary. Instead of the, it's just naming the mayor or mayor pro tem instead of the presiding officer. Ordinances shall be adopted in accordance with city charter. And then it goes, this other one, and Stacy, would you like to comment on the rest of that paragraph?
On that.
Any ordinance imposing a penalty fine.
That's what I'm talking about, just to clarify.
Just to clarify. Then we have the, again, the city manager part of it under item six point one. The rest of it is just forms. Frankly, the registration form instead of registration card, okay, if you want to talk for the council, same thing as mentioned in eight point two. Just as a matter of field, sometimes we do not really follow the, the mayor may ask questions with relevant department director at his or her discretion. Statements made by the mayor, department director may only be statements of fact and no discussion or consideration may occur addressing the council during the time limit. The mayor, under eight point three, as it, the mayor may at his or her discretion have removed any person making personnel, personal or impertinent or slanderous remarks while addressing the council. Instead of saying they shall become boisterous or be forthwith heard by the presiding officer bar such persons and so forth. Under eight point six, written communications, city business, which the council has control at any time. Mailing or emailing such communication to the city secretary or mailing or emailing such communication to individual council member. All members of the council shall have an email addressed issue to the city. Now, there, there has also been a request that we consider, and he may be looking at item five point six. If we go back to that. There's not one.
Five point four.
I know. And I really don't think this should be in, into an item five point six, but before we talk about posting the agenda, it's been requested that the agenda be sent to council members twenty-four hours before, twenty-four to forty-eight hours, forty-eight may be too long, before the time limit, I mean, for the statutory time to post the agenda for So think about that a little bit. You know, that just gives us time to look at it before it just, it just comes out.
Am I saying something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I made that request and that, that's exactly the reason, just so it gives us time. If there's something that doesn't look exactly right, something we have questions about, we can address that and potentially get it changed. If there needs to be a change, then that, that can be done without, because we're not, because we're not past the deadline yet.
If that's purview of the council, we're good with that. I mean, we have no objections, no concern. Well, Stacy may, but I'm one.
It's more than directed.
I'll tell you that when I have all the information, so.
And see, that's, that's the issue, because you may not have all the information in hand.
But, but sometimes why they, y'all don't get them till Saturday. So it's still finalized, whatever y'all say to make sure it happens.
We will adjust our timeline.
There, there is another recommendation in this, and I think it's a good one too. If you look under six point seven, six point seven, second paragraph. And that is where exceptions to the majority vote rule shall apply where ordinance requires otherwise. Okay? Put a period there and cross out the rest of the paragraph. Because we don't have a super majority rule now. That was changed. That involves finding and zoning. And so the rest of it is not necessary to put in there. It's a cleanup.
Is there not state statute that governs that?
There is one scenario under state statute that would apply, but we can just simply add as ordinance or statute requires.
And in this particular one, exceptions to the majority vote rule shall apply where ordinance requires otherwise.
We can.
So exceptions will still be there, you just don't have to name out.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
Now, are there any other, yes, Allen?
I know there are probably suggestions from the council, but we had discussions several weeks ago about five point four. And I would respectfully suggest that the council clarify five point four as to how council members can place things on the agenda. It says that it's placed for consideration on the agenda. In other cities, a number of council members have to agree that it be placed on the agenda and it be given to the city secretary in writing so many days in advance and that type thing. But when, when that question came to us, we began researching and there is no clear way for additional council members, other than the mayor and, and city manager at this point, to put something on the agenda. And so if, if the council saw mine too, I would suggest that perhaps we explain how, how a council member would want to put something on the agenda to get it done.
I've always interpreted that, not to be necessarily saying regarding the request, I've always interpreted, because I thought it was always a unique thing about our city and our policy, was that the council, the mayor, or any person of the public could just place an item on the agenda. I think that was always my intention of how that to be warranted, not a request to place on the agenda, just to place an actionable item on the agenda. Because that's a huge fight that, trust me, it happens in lots of cities. How do items get on agendas?
You've seen that in other places.
Yeah, I mean, so, now I just, I.
Well, this, this also kind of goes back to that, what I was talking about earlier when we, at, at the, at the point where people in the council, when they can make statements at the end, they can request a discussion and they can also request at that point that items be considered for future action by the council. Now, they can't be taking that, I mean, they can't be taking that night.
That's been struck.
No, it hasn't.
Five point three?
No.
It's all read it out of mine.
Well, five point three is struck, but I think it takes care of it somewhere else.
Yeah, it's.
It's been moved.
It just, yeah, it's just, that was just kind of a duplication of.
Where is it duplicated?
It's under the order of the agenda.
Falls under your council member comments.
Yeah. Yeah, council comments under order of agenda. It's on five point one. Council members' discussion of other matters.
Okay. And so this.
Now.
This procedural item doesn't need to be included?
We can actually change that name of that and say council members' discussion of other matters or future issues for consideration.
I don't, I guess I don't read those as the same thing, but maybe I'm thinking too hard there. Well, I wouldn't want anyone on the council to think that they had to wait until that comment to put something on the agenda. I would think that they'd be able to add, like Randy said, just call and add it to the agenda.
I think that with your leadership, that's, we all understand that you've always been very good about that, but that doesn't mean it can always be.
It's not always.
Well, that's what I mean, that's my thing, we need to spell that out.
I think that, I mean, on the back of Allen's.
So you would just leave five point three as it is.
I think it was clarified, I mean, I think I would just take out, because he was, he was interpreting consideration to be a maybe, or would or would not be placed on there. To me, I'd never, I'd never consider it to be a would or would not, I just consider it would be, in my opinion. So I think to take five point four to clarify, I guess, any member of the city council, and I know maybe you're opening Pandora's box up, but in ten years, me sitting up here, it's never been a problem before, or general public may place an item on the agenda by submitting.
Written request within timeline.
Has it ever happened?
No. The, the general public has actually placed an item on the agenda? No.
Well, so in previous administrations, we did have some people who commented that part of the reason that was reworded at that time like that or drafted and recorded because the city administrator and mayor wanted to go through them before it was put on it, rather than just people request directly from me and us to put everything that comes through on there. Reviewed or.
And I say, if you want to take out the general public, I mean, that's fine. I mean.
But can you still go through the council?
Sure, you could always have the public. I mean, I think if your duty is a council member to have to take, take it up, I mean, yeah.
All I have to do is contact the council person.
Correct.
And it would be the same type of thing, but it would be a little more.
And I think, and real quick, Gerald, let's tie back down, because all that goes together, tie it back in, because there's issues I see, I would, I know we don't ever do it, I would encourage to go back and keep the regular scheduled meetings as the first and third, because what if it ever got in a situation where I had a mayor who would not work with the council? And I've got to hope, I'll be there, wait a whole month now to get something done on the next regular scheduled meeting if I can't convince them to call a special meeting. And I mean, I know those are farfetched things, but they, I just see them all the time, the issues in other cities where if it, if it's a regularly scheduled deal on the third, I mean, we typically don't have that, but it's already in our policy to have it. So then I'm not having to fight as hard as a council member to try and get something done in the event that I've got a mayor that's not going to help me out, you know?
Well, then we, pretty regularly have a special meeting on the third Thursday anyway.
Correct.
It would be just as easy for us to cancel a regularly scheduled meeting. It would just be tonight, we'd be in a regular meeting.
I mean, it's not creating, you didn't want to do the other, I mean, you're either canceling or you're creating, I mean, but if it's already scheduled, then I mean, it's already there and I can try to do something if I had to.
I think when.
Can you hear their comment?
All I was gonna, all I was gonna say is, I don't know if there's any appetite for it, but once again, always comes up, thank God, we never had this problem really before, is we want any policies on how to censor members of the council. I mean, I'm not advocating for that, just throwing it out there, if we want to consider it. I got real excited when I saw this, because I thought you're going to be like the city of Fort Worth and trip for a pay today, so.
Yeah.
I said, Doug's gonna make a hundred thousand dollars, Mayor Fort Worth's gonna make, seventy-five thousand.
He'll be like Grandberry then.
Yeah, no Fort Worth, seventy-five thousand if you're a council member.
Yeah.
That's what Grandberry had, like an entire turtle.
Any other comment?
I think that was written about the first and third, Thursday, Tuesday. We didn't necessarily have committee meetings only on Tuesdays. We might have them on Monday afternoon or Wednesday morning or whenever we needed to. And that's why that, it is.
Particular one.
It has fallen to the point, or it has come to the point where we have committee meetings on that third Tuesday, but it was not always so. And I think that's probably why that was written that way.
Yeah.
And so I'm checking, our charter says that the council shall hold at least one regular meeting per month to be designated by ordinance or resolution. And so many special meetings the council and mayor may be necessary. So let me see if maybe at some point you passed a resolution, I'm not aware of, that added that as a regular meeting, because it says our regular meetings are set by ordinance or resolution. So I'll do some research on that.
We have.
They've been in ordinance, but just didn't update this.
We have this down just as review and to discuss.
It wasn't in our copies. This is the word document I have, so I don't have any idea.
We have this down as to, I had this down just to review and just. We have this down as to, I had this down just to review and discuss. And if it's okay with the committee, I, and Justin has just left, so. Anyway, Lynn and, and Alan here, if it's okay with the two of you, then we will, we will bring this back in a more form after the discussion that we've had here today. And bring this back into more finalized form for you to look at at the next meeting before we'd ever go. There's no big rush on this thing for this, before we ever go to the council. If we go with the recommendation of the council, then we'll run it through the committee again, okay?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
One suggestion that you might consider when you bring your final version back is that I would like to see something that would state that if, if action was taken out of committee on an item, that it must be an actual item on the next regular agenda? If, if there's new information that comes out or something along those lines that warrants it being removed, then the chair could make a motion to table that item pending review of the additional information. I don't think there should be some.
Something in there.
I don't think, I don't think action should be taken out of a committee and then be allowed to sit.
Okay. All right, we'll take that up at the next meeting, too.
But that's, we can discuss, we all can discuss how the best way to handle that is.
Okay. Good. Thank you. The next item that we have. Yes, if I could pull it up correctly. We have, we have three vacancies. Two, I'd like to ask the committee if they would consider tonight filling. One is place seven on the planning and zoning commission. We had a resignation. And that was effective, that's, well, it's effective now. Yeah. And we have an alternate, Tom Hines, on that committee who has been going, has been participating, as I understand, on the, when needed. And to move that person into place seven position on the planning and zoning commission. And the. The second deal is the board of adjustment. And we have no alternate in the board of adjustment. And we have one person that has, had put in, and, and we did not select him, is Matt Miller. We interviewed him. And Matt was living outside the city at the time, he is now living in the city. And I would suggest that we look at him for an alternate, for alternate one on the board of adjustment. And the, and we'll hold the economic development authority until our next meeting. If that's okay with you. Any discussion from either of you? Is that okay with you?
Yeah, do we need a motion?
Yes, we're, yes, we do.
I probably need two. One, I'll make the first one to move Tom Hines into place seven on planning and zoning.
Okay. We have a second, and we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay.
And then I will make the motion to move Matt Miller into.
Alternate number one?
Alternate number one.
For B O A.
For B O A?
Yeah, for, yes, for board of adjustment.
Second, there.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, we will forward those to the full council at the next meeting. And we will take up at our next meeting Steenville Type B Economic Development Authority vacancy. That is, that because Casey, of course, has moved to El Paso. Okay? So thank you, Mr. Mayor, that ends our discussion for this.
Mr. Chris, personal leisure.
Yes, so we are looking at.
Need to give Mr. Thurman back to have a forum, Mayor. Just, just in left.
He's, yeah. Well, are we gonna vote on something here, Matt?
Yes.
Sorry.
No, ask his.
Ask his phone.
I think we want to get.
I tell you, listen, I mean, his personnel also can't, they can't jump to the next committee either. He got a, he got a phone call, I think, I tell you. There you go, he's back, okay.
You talked faster than I thought you would.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna comment, none of us.
So do we have enough people here to do this thing? So I'm gonna let Kelly come up and talk about the new ordinance for municipal parks and cemeteries. And specifically highlight a couple of things within that pertaining to pets in our parks and alcohol in our parks and facilities. And I'll let her run through this.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I've been with the city of Steenville for a little over a year. And with my first three months of being here, I kind of started reviewing and looking at policies, procedures, ordinance that pertain to our, our parks, amenities, and city facilities. And one thing I ran into is at that time last year, we did not have a lot of, of any of those to kind of look at how our patients should behave, expectations of how to utilize our facilities, behavior in the parks. So I'm kind of starting to talk with Mr. King about this. And previous director had been working on ordinances, kind of to support all those things that I was looking at of how to take care of our property, what's expected in our property and our facilities. And so after visiting with Mr. King, found this document that previous director, Mr. Bassrim, had put together and done a thorough job with, and had visited with the park board at the time, including Mr. Trussell when he was on the, last year. And so after doing some more research, reviewing through this information, visiting with Mr. King, Mr. Thomas, and Chief Harris, the information I brought forward to you tonight for the new chapter ninety-seven is kind of a broad overview of all the areas of our parks and facilities that we'd like to bring forward to committee for approval and council next month. But there are two certain sections that I would like to talk about briefly off, off here. But if there's any questions pertaining to any of the package put together besides ninety-seven point one-two and ninety-seven point one-three, I'd be happy to answer those, and then I'll go into those in just a moment. None? Okay, thank you. So our current ordinance for animals reads, it's section ninety point one zero. What I would like to propose moving forward is that we change the language to read animals other than dogs are prohibited in any of the parks located within the city limits during any organized special events. I had to put my puppy down yesterday. Tried to do this, dogs are very special to families. And people ask a lot, and I hear a lot of people from the community that say they would love to come to our events, but they can't bring their dogs, so they choose not to. Puppies are part of families, you know, people who aren't a force and unable to have children have puppies. Families have lost their children, have moved on out of the house, they bring their, their dogs. So that's something special that I'd like to see us bring back to the community in allowing our four-legged friends' puppies brought to our special events that we put on through city-sponsored events. So with that, we would amend the section ninety point ten A to where it reads animals other than dogs are prohibited in any of the parks located within the city limits during any organized special events and leave that section as is. And then we have additional rules that would pertain to ninety point, excuse me, ninety-seven point twelve in the proposed ordinance package that just pertains to other rules of how to maintain the parks with animals. Do you have any questions on that? Favor, okay. And the next proposal is our current ordinance, I'm sorry, something's missing. Okay. Our next ordinance, current ordinance for alcohol in the park reads section one thirty point one five, which is possession of intoxicating beverages in city recreation hall or city park prohibited. Currently reads it shall be unlawful for any person to have in his or her possession intoxicating beverages while that person is in city recreation hall or in any of the covered pavilions in city park. So section ninety-seven point three, if you might take a look at that with me, is a little more detailed. Originally, currently right now, it stands that you can have a beverage, alcoholic beverage, standing in city park. From what I understand, there's not a lot of issues or concerns with that or had trouble. But I know during conversation with council member Trussell, that did come up to light that, you know, you could not drink in a dugout, but you could step outside and have a beer, you know, or you could be drinking next to the playground while your children are playing, as our current ordinance reads. And so if you could look at ninety-seven point one three, section, excuse me, C, proposal is to change that ordinance to read, our existing ordinance to read alcohol consumption is not allowed in city park, Optimus J C Park, Bill Johnson Park, Splashville Covered Pavilions, or dugouts unless a written approval is granted by the Parks and Leisure Services Director. And I'd like to also add, or city-sponsored events. So I know Mr. Trussell has a few comments he'd like to share with that. And then if there's any comments or concerns about this new proposal.
I think we just thought the previous one was a little ambiguous. I know she's talked to Jason about this, and obviously there's not a lot of problems down at the park with drinking, but it was just, it stated weirdly to me that I could sit in my truck and drink right at the pavilion, but I step on the pavilion, I can't. So we just wanted to more clearly define that. So the previous one, it allowed for that, and we used to, you know, I played softball down there and I, people sit on their tailgates and drink. But they get around that rule of the dugout by just leaving it right outside the dugout so they can go back and forth and still drink their beer while they play softball. So I think this just puts it in Kelly's hands to prove this for events. It's really getting us more towards a special events model with things like buckles and bugs that we have coming up, so we can control those things. And then for, for daytime use, I mean, the park's not gonna be allowed to have alcohol, so.
So I have one question. The, like, the concert series things?
That's a special event.
So alcohol would be provided, or not provided, allowed?
Yes, we can look at that, and that's what one of these other additions that we've added to the ninety-seven point one-three is that they would have to follow all these rules and regulations to be able to service alcohol.
Right.
But that'd be something we would look for, look towards doing, yes.
Okay.
And as also this pertains to, we've had a lot of questions with, you know, the city of a new facility, the rec hall and the existing senior center, that people would like to come in and have sort of alcohol for whatever their event is that they're having, and this would now allow for that to happen and take place. But again, they would also follow the same rules and regulations of licensing and permits and stuff of that nature.
Okay.
And Jason, do you have any other comments on that particular stuff? I didn't get to talk to you, stay, I talked to her and.
Honestly, my thought on that is it's worked like it has, as long as I've been here. I grew a concern sometimes about adding regulations where there hadn't been a problem. And then I'd let the chief speak to, if you suddenly do that and we create a whole new class of violator, what that would, the impact may be for him, his staff, having to address that. Because there is a thirty, forty plus year history of folks doing that. When you suddenly say you can't do that anymore, that's probably gonna create an impact for those guys.
I mean, I don't have a problem with rewording that and relooking at that, I just thought the way it's stated originally is just really weird to me. That you can drink anywhere except for under a pavilion doesn't make sense to me, so I mean, I'd almost.
And that's from the nineteen seventy-five code.
Yeah, so it's almost like. Do we need that?
We can always theorize. You have specific types of gatherings that occur under those. And so in some of those type gatherings, alcohol may not have been the best thing to introduce in that environment. And so that's probably why it was, was done that way. But on the whole of all of our park systems. I mean, we, we just, we've never had a lot of COVID drunkenness in the parks. We don't have a lot of alcohol track related issues in the parks, so that's.
I think my issue is like, we're, we're putting in smaller pavilions, that's our model, right? That's where we're headed towards?
Yes.
So you can drink as long as you don't get underneath that pavilion. So it's just weirdly written that, you know, that we need to strike that part?
Maybe if you'd like, if y'all comfortable with everything else, move, progress that forward. And maybe let's sit down and, and take a scalpel to, to this one and carve out kind of what you're looking for, but not create something that's unlivable either.
No, that's fine with me, I don't have a problem with it.
Then we can bring that back in March.
You can solve all that problem by just not allowing it.
Well, that's, so that is literally what the, the new ordinance would do.
No, I'm talking about in the entire park.
It's, it's supposed. The new ordinance does that.
There should be no exceptions to it.
The exception is special events.
And there should be no exceptions to it, because it's supposed to be for youth. And this, in my opinion, it would be better served, better serve the youth if, if it was not allowed under any circumstances or conditions.
I think what you're gonna get into is you have a concert venue within that park. So unless you carve that out as it's not a part of your park, that would.
Well, and you have a lot of things, it's not, not everything that goes on is youth. We have adult leagues, we have adult events that happen in the rec hall that, that are not geared towards youth at all.
We're gonna get into rentals.
Do, do we need alcohol at, at the kids' T-ball game?
Probably not.
No, we don't, not with. But.
But you see the difficulty, because now you're, you're making classifications and exemptions or, or allowances because of the different types of, of uses for the city facilities.
You'll, you'll negate a lot of your attendance at things, at the amphitheater?
Yeah.
If you, if you go a different route, and you would cancel an event that we are potentially putting on, trying to promote tourism. I mean, in order to do those things at that event, then you're gonna have to have.
We have our own events, I mean, Mula has our. We have.
That's because we allowed it.
We have.
It doesn't have to be there.
We have tastings on the trail.
Exactly.
Again, that's because we allowed it.
We don't have to do any events, but.
But you can have all of these events and still not have alcohol involved.
It depends on how many people you want there. We know, we know where that, I mean, it just is the nature of the beast, then do an event, especially.
And it's not always alcohol, was not always, it's, it's a revenue source when you have that, whether, you know, percentage of sales from the vendor that comes in, or a flat, you know, flat vendor fee that comes in. So I mean, it's, it's not gonna, you know, save the bank, but it is an additional revenue source for us to have that means, but obviously control and monitor what we allow come in and where they, where they are and ensuring that they're following all, you know, permitting and proper licensing and, and working with places as necessary, stuff like that.
And we can, we can revisit some of the alcohol stuff with Chief Harris and Jason, and we can sit down and look at some of this stuff and see how we do it, because we didn't address this with Chief Harris, I don't believe, prior to this, so we can sit down and discuss those things with him. I think what we were trying to do was, the way it was written before, which maybe wasn't the right way, and that was nobody's fault, it was done a long time ago, but, so just looking at how that was written. I think we have to have some things in place to cover ourselves so that we can approve these kinds of events and get that attendance to our park. Because birds on the amphitheater is a draw to our park, and it's a potential revenue source, it's a potential tourism source. And so I don't think not having alcohol there at all is probably not a great solution. Just because we know the concert series, I mean, that's a huge part of it. Everybody out there has a cooler when they come up there, and I've never seen it get out of hand, I've never seen anything. And it's a great event, so.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, the only thing I was gonna say was the moment we say no more is when everybody's gonna start getting sneaky and start, I mean, it's, they're gonna bring it in, whether, whether you say absolutely not, it's gonna get there. So at least this way, we have a way of deciding where it can be and when it can be there.
I think just kind of put some control in Kelly's hands to make sure that all this stuff is bundled through our office and we know what's going on in the park, what events are being held, and that they're following state and local law. Was the, was the driving force behind some of this. And it wasn't just the alcohol thing, we've looked at a lot of different things within this document. The dog stuff stood out because we're making a change to some stuff, and the alcohol stuff is obviously a change. So, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that, you know, we just changed the way we deal with alcohol in this town as a whole. So we need to look at changing our ordinance just to make sure we keep up with those things.
I, I don't disagree with any of that, and yes, she does have, need to have control, I, I certainly understand that. And that, that's something that we probably have been lacking in, in some areas.
Okay, so what I understand is we're gonna get together and visit a little bit more on section ninety-seven point one-three of the new proposed, excuse me, new proposed ordinance, and bring that back to council in March.
Can we approve any of that without section, without the section on alcohol, so we can.
Sure.
You presented the, you, you can vote to advance the one about animals. What, what else did you have in mind, Mr. Trussell? What, what else did you have in mind, Chris?
Well, just relook at that alcohol, just saying, get it with Jason, get it with Chief. So, we could approve everything with the...
I would, I would just move it forward with the exclusion of section ninety-seven point thirteen.
Ninety-seven thirteen, yeah.
And then, we bring it back later.
Okay. So, that'll be...
So, you need a...
Yes.
So, you need an order, do we need the order, the motion to also strike the old sections? Can we do that all in one?
Yes, just on the, currently, just right now, on the, the section ninety point one-zero for the animals, since alcohol's still being...
That isn't another...
What, what you'll vote for tonight is to advance...
Just ninety-seven.
A favorable recommendation to the council, save section ninety-seven thirteen. And then, then the ordinance would be written by, by Mr. Thomas to ensure that it's legal, proper, and so forth.
So, we don't need the motion to strike ninety point...
Yes.
Yes, you do need it.
Your second motion would be to...
You need them in separate motions, okay. All right, so, so, Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to move forward the positive recommendation, the new ordinance, chapter ninety-seven, with the exception of ninety-seven point one-three.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now, we need a second one, right?
And now, you need a motion...
Second one to strike?
Motion to strike section ninety point one-zero, I'm sorry, no, to amend section ninety point one-zero...
Right.
As presented.
So, correct. Is that the one we were looking for, or are you looking for the one thirty point?
We gotta do that one, too.
We gotta do that one.
You gotta do both.
All right, do you have a second?
Yeah.
Proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we need another one for one thirty point one-five.
Now, you need a motion to strike, make a motion to strike section one thirty point one-five.
I'd say we can get along, let's mess with it, ninety-seven thirteen together.
Okay.
Okay, I'll withdraw that motion.
Bring any of those back.
It's confusing.
That's all we have, right?
That's all we have, thank you very much.
Thank you, K.
You're three minutes.
Thank you for letting me speak.
No, no problem.
Is there one more thing? You're finished, okay. Mr. Thurman, Personnel Committee.
All right, been working with staff on the pay study and, and different versions of a potentially, a potential proposed pay plan. Monica did some last-minute number crunching this afternoon. I'm gonna kind of let her talk through it and present it, but I do want to preface this with anything you, nothing you see is set in stone, or has been approved, or has even been, uh, anything yet. So, so, for, for council, for the general public, for any employees, this, some of this could change. I will thank Captain Gresham for his work, he is, he has performed an evaluation on the pay study and made some, some suggestions as far as the process that was used to come up with those averages, and so, I appreciate his work. But, and I'll let Monica go through the numbers, but what you've, we've discussed various step programs for the non-public safety employees. Public safety's already on a step program, and then, other than maybe a few changes that have been discussed, we don't expect major changes there to, to the structure of their pay plan. But for non-public safety employees, we've discussed ideas of a ten-step plan, twenty-step plan, how that affects things in the future, and I think with staff, we've kind of settled on a, on a fifteen-step plan as a, as a compromise. So, with that, I will just turn it over to either Monica or Alan One, if you have anything else to say or present the numbers.
No, sir. The thing that I do want to say is, again, I want to stress what Mr. Thurman said. This is an example, this is not a recommendation, this is not stamped in stone. As a matter of fact, there's still a lot of disagreement amongst senior staff about this, about how to proceed, and I spoke with Mr. Thurman this afternoon to work with him to come up with a solution to that, that disagreement. Certainly no disharmony, just disagreement, robust discussion. I, I think the idea of a step plan for everybody in the city is, is, is a good idea, whether it's this one, another one, or some other iteration. But what we're asking is that you take a look at this, give us suggestions on, on what you see, this is, these numbers are based specifically on the, the salary information that Mr. Thurman collected. And, and again, we just thank you for allowing us to work on this and to bring it forward at some future date for your consideration.
Just, so, so everybody knows kind of what you're, what you're looking at, with, with this document that Monica has passed out, the step one is the average minimum pay from the salary survey. Step fifteen is the maximum. Exactly what, this is exactly what the salary survey says, so that's one reason we say, that doesn't mean because it says it now, that's what we're gonna adopt. This is just survey numbers and what it would look like if we adopted the survey, exactly how it says. These spots in between are just a, basically, an even progression of what that salary survey says through the fifteen steps, so, as we look deeper into this, there may be some positions that we look at that say that, that doesn't make sense within our own hierarchy, we can't do that, we can't pay this position fifteen thousand dollars more to top in than this position, that doesn't make sense, so we'll have to make those changes.
And we did find a couple of those today.
Yeah, yeah, so, basically, this is raw data, not...
Very raw.
We thought we were gonna have much less raw data, but we don't, so, so, we're still gonna work through those things. You know, one of the other things that we're working through is, is how to implement current employees, how to move current employees into this step plan in a, in a fair way, and because currently, they're, they're just, it's kind of been a, here's your minimum, here's your maximum, and, and staff figures out how to get them paid where we can keep them, so, as long as we approve the budget. So, this, this will provide more of a framework, more of a path where employees can see where they're going, and, and the main thing that I just want to stress is, we know there's problems within our pay scale, and we can't fix them in one year. We can't fix them in one setting. My hope is that this gives us, you know, for some of those that may be anomalies, we've got a path to get them back to a fair pay without breaking the bank. And so, if anybody has any questions, you know, sorry, one more thing, there are, there is, executive staff is included on this, just to ease anybody's concerns, we've already talked about that executive staff likely will probably remain as the council sets that. So, this would, again, this is just what the salary survey says, and if we plugged it into a fifteen-step plan, what it would look like. So, outside of that, does anybody have any, any questions about our process so far or any of these numbers?
Mr. Chair, I'm not on your committee, but I have a question. If we have a, an employee X that's been here seven years, and they're only at step three, does that mean that we're gonna bring them up to seven, or...
Not necessarily. We've, we've talked through that, through different ways to handle that. I can tell you the initial thought, and I'm not telling you that we're gonna settle here, but the initial thought was, when this is implemented, they would go to the closest step that is up from where they currently are. No one would go back, so if they're currently, they've been here two years, but they fall into step eight, we're not gonna bump them back to step two.
Okay.
No question. And, and, but, just because they're in step two pay right now, but they've been here eight years, doesn't mean we're automatically gonna bump them to step eight, not necessarily.
Okay.
That's probably a budgetary thing, more than...
Absolutely, it is, yes.
But, we're looking at all those options right now to see what the best and most fair way is to do that. There's no question that it, that that is, has been a concern of, Alan and I talked about that concern very early on, is if we go to a step plan, how do we implement that in a fair way?
And remember, when Alan brought this up, it wasn't that our step plan for the non-public safety people wasn't based on tenure. Tenure gets you where you're eligible for a step increase, but you have to meet your KPIs to go to step increase.
Correct.
You could potentially in the future have a person that is been here seven years, but is only at step three, because they have not met their KPIs to be able to advance forward through.
That's right. So, the intent is whatever step plan we adopt, we will also bring forward a policy in how employees will move, will be eligible to move through that.
So, it's not just a time of service involved?
Correct.
There's more to it than that.
Correct. You, you move to the next step merit-based, and council each year will address CPI adjustments however we need to, that would also adjust the plan, but, so you may get a CPI adjustment one year, because that's what council approved, but that is not necessarily guaranteed that that employee will move from one step to the next, if their merit did not...
Got you, okay.
If, if their performance doesn't merit that.
Okay, right.
So, feel like this brings a, a, a good level of accountability, a good tool for, for executive staff to use, and it doesn't, there's been a lot of concern of, I made it another year, so, you owe me money, and, and we don't want to create that.
We don't want that mindset.
Correct.
I appreciate all the time and effort you've put into this, because I know you have done a significant amount of work on it, and I appreciate you.
So, I think we've realized today that we probably have a few more meetings before we're ready to come back with a more polished version, but...
I hope we can have it ready by next committee meeting. We're gonna try.
So, I, I guess my question would just be to, to council and as a whole, and the committee certainly, if you have any questions or, or anything, to please email Alan with those, so that we can be sure we look at those concerns in our, when we meet again.
Or, or call me, it doesn't have to be you.
That's all I got.
It is eight-ten, and we'll close the City Council committee meeting.